All righty, it is May, let's see, what is the date? May 21st. I get it confused with my granddaughter's birthday, but it's May 21st. It's 6:30. This is the Harpswell Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our Vice Chair Dan if he would lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So wherever you are, whether you're watching now or in the future, welcome to the Harpswell Planning Board, one of the last bastions of democracy. And with that said, we work as a board of equals. I may be the chair and sort of responsible for some of the pro forma stuff, but each one of us brings a really special quality to the board, and so we really rely on each other to make sure that we cover all the points and all the bases that need to be covered. And with that in mind, I'd like to welcome our newest associate member, Heather, and Heather Allen, and just ask if you want to say anything. You don't have to say anything.
I don't have anything to say right now. I'm in a learning mode for a little bit, but thank you.
Okay. All right, well, with that said, all questions are welcome. There are no stupid questions. If you don't understand something, or you want clarification, please don't hesitate to ask it because undoubtedly someone else also has the question or would benefit from having your question answered. So feel free to join in. You're not, let's see, one of the things I want to do here is before we go over the agenda, I want to declare a quorum. A quorum is four, but we can have five voting members, so let's have people introduce each other and we'll go from there.
I'm Lori Rice with Harpswell.
Howard Levitan, Oars Island.
Amy Hybel, Harpswell.
Dan Holbeck, Oars Island.
Christine Donovan Hall, Oars Island.
You can say your word.
Heather Allen, Cundys Harbor.
And Margaret McIntyre, the interim town planner.
All right. We also have Tim Clark here, who's not sitting at the table, but he's here to offer any expertise from the codes enforcement office, and we want to just recognize that he's here, too. All right, so declaring a quorum, we'll have Lori voting, Howard voting, I will be voting, Dan will be voting, and if we need a fifth vote, it will be Christine. And we'll work from there. All right, we have three items on the agenda tonight, and the way that we usually conduct these meetings is we'll take the first item on the agenda and go through them in order. And I will introduce a very brief description of what the item is, and then I'll turn it over to Margaret to see if Margaret wants to fill us in, update us on anything. Then we'll ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if they would like to share anything with the board. Then we open it up to the board for questions, and then after the board has had its questions and its discussion amongst the board, then we take action and decide what we want to do next. So that's the way we'll-
After input from the audience.
Absolutely. Thank you, absolutely, yes. We'll have any, thank you, Dan. So we want to just make sure that everybody gets a chance to ask questions and offer whatever information they want to offer. So our first one is Carolyn Hertz and David Fath. I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce that.
Kurtz.
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 And David, F-A-T-H?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And this is an application for a dock in the Resource Protection District. It's a lot on Hildreth Road, and they would like to install a seasonal dock consisting of a pier, a ramp, and a float to provide access to the water. So let's hear from your representative.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forster with Flycatcher here on behalf of the applicant. So this is a proposed, it is a proposed permanent pier with a temporary ramp and float. So the Kurtz property has an existing set of stairs as you come out through the back of the lot, go across the lawn, down the slope. So those stairs land on ledge, fall short of any legitimate access down to the resource. So we worked with custom float services to design a relatively short pier. There is a piece of ledge that sticks out into the resource a little bit, so we targeted that as the end of the proposed pier section. So the pier will only be 40 feet long with a 40-foot ramp and then a 10-by-20-foot float. The float will bottom out at low tide. It's not a realistic distance to extend the pier longer in order to get out any further. We did look at some alternatives, however, because of that hunk of ledge that sits out there, we couldn't really make the pier any shorter because then the float would potentially land on that piece of ledge, and that doesn't work very well. So permits for this are the Army Corps, the DEP, both of which have been obtained, and then after this, we'd be going to the selectmen. So happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Margaret, you have any updates?
No, I believe they've already held a sit walk with the code office.
Yep, we had, so Howard and Tim Clark, we had a site visit, and Noel Butters showed up, and there were no questions or concerns.
Have we heard anything from the harbor master?
I don't know. That would be Denise is kind of the keeper of all that information. I'm not sure.
He's usually last.
He's the last person.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything from the harbor master. There is one other thing that I wanted to add. You know, we opted to utilize the existing stairs that are there because they are in the best location for access down to the resource, but that does push us close to the northern property of Butter. So we did obtain consent form from them in order to be located within a 25-foot setback.
Thank you, saw that one. Yeah, thank you. Okay, open to the board for any questions?
Just a comment. It was sort of high tide when we did our sit walk, so we didn't see that piece of ledge, but from the pictures that we've seen, it's clear that the dock has to be that length to clear the ledge, but there's a lot of current in Ewing Narrow at that point. So it's going to have to, that pier's going to have to be pretty strong. Not as bad as the one at the corner that we approved.
Yeah.
Similar, and we've done a couple in Ewing Narrows lately.
Yep. The pier itself will be, we use stainless steel bracket, stainless steel brackets and thunderbolts that lock those timbers right into the ledge. And then we also have a large span in between there, so we're able to do 20-foot spans in between bends. With less structure in the water, there's less stress on it. And then we do use 5/8ths chain from the float back to the pierhead, and then there'll be cross chains out to helical anchors in this case to hold it in place.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any members of the public would like to speak?
I had one quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I didn't make the sit walks, my apologies. Any evidence of eelgrass down there?
There's no eelgrass within the proposed project site, definitely not where the float is. So eelgrass is a subtitle species, so the float will bottom out at low tide. So if there were eelgrass, it would be much further out than where the float rests.
Thank you for confirming.
Good question. Thank you.
That could be my question.
If there were, we typically would, yeah, there's, right, so the state published data shows an eelgrass band, and that's represented in the plan of where it's historically mapped. And that's a pretty, you know, it's 85 feet from the float to the historic eelgrass bed.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the public that would like to say something? Okay. All righty. So any questions or comments from the board? All right. Let's move ahead, then. The board has to review standards for piers, docks, and wharves, which is in Section 15.3 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance that sets out the standards for these kinds of structures. And we have findings of fact from the planner, and I'd like to just, well, actually, what we will do is we'll take a look at the findings of fact, which spell out what standards need to be met by the application, and we'll go through each standard and then make a motion to determine whether that standard has been met. So I'm happy to do that, but if someone else would like to go through and read the standards and make a motion, I'm happy to entertain that.
Madam Chair, if I may, we have included responses to those standards in our application, if that's of use to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Good. All right, the first standard is 15.3.1 that says no more than one pier, dock, wharf, or similar structure extending or located below the maximum high water line of a water body or within a wetland is allowed on a single lot. And I move that the planning board finds that this standard is met based on the finding that the applicants are proposing to install one dock to serve the lot.
Do you want to do them separately, or do you want to-
Well, that's a good, that was a, that's a good question.
This is an old mark problem.
It is an old mark problem, absolutely.
I propose that we incorporate all of the findings-
Okay.
And just reference the numbers that we're doing-
Yes, okay, thank you.
From the planner's draft motion.
I've got it, I've got it. I have a note to myself at the bottom asking whether we wanted to do that. So Heather, just so you know, there are like two pages of motions. So I will move that Section 15.3.1 through 15.3.11.2 are met in accordance with the findings of fact prepared by the planner dated May 15, 2025, Item 250503. I move that we find those standards are met based on the findings. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, we dispensed with that. Therefore, I move in light of these findings of fact, which show that 13.3.1 through 13.3.11.2 are met, with consideration given to the supporting documents in the record, that the board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the applicants Carolyn Kurtz and David Fath have met the standards of the Town of Harpswell Shoreland Zoning Ordinance for the installation of a seasonal dock in the Resource Protection District. The board approves the application subject to the following conditions of approval. First, the approval's not final until such time as a notice of decision has been signed by the chair. Two, the approval is based on the application, including all the drawings of the proposed dock prepared by Flycatcher LLC, and on all the submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Three, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents. Any variations from the plan, except de minimis changes as determined by the town planner, are subject to review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. And four, the applicants shall comply with all state and federal rules and regs that apply to the application. So made a motion, is there a second? Lori seconds? Howard seconds?
No.
Howard seconds? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all, let's vote, all in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you later.
All of that were-
I didn't grab myself any of that.
He does, he does do a really good job.
He's excellent.
Very detailed.
Excellent.
Makes it easy for us. All right, the second application is 250504, Cindy Lee Rideout, who is the owner, and Casey Lee Wright, who is the applicant. This is map 13, Lot 163 in Edgewater Colony. We are considering the board's exercising jurisdiction for the review of an application to reconstruct a non-conforming structure.
Lori did the dust.
Yes. I like to keep things exciting here. All right. Margaret, I'm going to ask you if you'd like to add anything or summarize anything for the board before we start.
All I need to add, I think, is that I was not at the sit walk. Howard and Tim Clark both were, and so they could probably give a little more insight than I could.
Okay. I did go on that sit walk with Tim later, and so, so let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll move along.
I'm Casey Wright. I am Cindy Rideout's daughter. This is, we'll have the seventh generation on this property. We've owned it almost 100 years, and we're just trying to make it 100 more years to be able to be environmentally sound and making sure the structure is permanent, and ultimately to get my mother back there so she can live the rest of her life there. And we've tried to figure out every which way possible to make it fit to what we have for space. And with the septic going in, it was the only really way to keep it is where it is currently. We did absorb a little bit from the back corner. We didn't have that. There was probably a 5-by-5 section that's more towards the property line, and we've absorbed that to make it more of a rectangular shape instead of having that bump out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Howard, I'm in.
From the sit walk, I think this is a justifiable project. We've done, as a board in the last couple of years, at least two, if not three, houses in Edgewater. This one is one house back from the water, but almost all of these lots are very small, very small, and you can barely get a septic system in, but they can get, they have a septic design and from a licensed designer. The only comment that I would make is, as a whole, there are a lot of wells nearby. Within, because the lots are so small, everybody has a well, but not everybody has a septic system. Some of them, like this property, had a holding tank permitted, I assume after overboard discharge went away at some point in the 70s.
Yep.
The last few that want to do this are going to have much more difficult problems. And the way the land runs, this is all heading towards the water. So all, whatever septic's there is going ultimately to the water.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's just something we really ought to think about because the last guy in is probably going to have to put an aerobic system in order to make it work. I don't think there's anything we can do about it. They have a licensed septic designer. I think there is almost no ability to move to get greatest practical extent on the nonconformities. There's just not enough, there's nothing, no place to go with a house or anything. It's in the best place it can be. So in my mind, this is something the planning board doesn't need to deal with.
Okay. I have a question about your water. How is your water?
We get water from the property behind us. It's a shared well, I believe, with three or four other houses and camps in the area, and that's what we've been using. It's not, of course, it's Harpswell water, but that's what we were planning on using and already have spoken in-
Okay. Is there any saltwater intrusion in the water yet? No? Okay.
Yeah, it's up there.
Yeah, yeah. I just would echo, just for clarification, the planning board can do two things in terms of this review. It can either, it can remand the applicant to work with the codes office, and then the planning board is done with it, and we'll take a vote on whether we're going to do that or not. If the board decides it wants to review this, then it has very specific standards that it has to use in order to review it. And just, that's what this discussion is really all about, is deciding which way we're going to go, whether we'll just give it to codes or whether it warrants further review according to the limits of our review. So I would agree with Howard that over time, I think that it's going to become more and more difficult to do stuff there just because the lots are small. And it's a situation where the lots were approved before we really had information about wells and contaminants and things like that, and we didn't pay attention. So everybody has the right to do what they want with their property within certain restrictions, but just wanted to make sure, because we are seeing saltwater intrusion and increasing number of wells, but-
Nothing yet down there that I've known, but even neighbors haven't said anything yet.
Okay. All right, any other board members?
No, I, just from what I've read in the application, I agree with what Howard said. There just is no alternative here.
No.
And so, you know, I would be in favor of just remanding it to the code enforcement office.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Does anybody want to, anybody else have any questions? Any questions? Anybody from the public? There isn't anybody really out there, but, Tim, do you have anything that you want to share?
With codes, I think this is the best solution for the situation that we have there. It keeps it in the best spot for fire, keeps it in the best spot for the leach field, so it's all good.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the planning board remand the application of Cindy Lee Rideout to reconstruct a non-conforming structure on Lot 163 on map 13 that will continue to be non-conforming with respect to the property line setbacks to the code enforcement officer for processing. If the proposed reconstruction deviates substantially from this proposal, including but not limited to a change in the proposed septic system design, the town planner shall require that the revised proposal be re-reviewed by the planning board to determine if the board wants to take jurisdiction for the review of the application.
Second. Dan seconds? All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
So what will happen next is I'll write a little letter to you saying that the board declined the permission, and then the code office will review your application for their, you know, building code and stuff, and they'll give you a permit.
Yeah, that warrants-
Okay, thank you so very much. Yep, I'll get it to you.
Yeah. Good luck and happy moving out of that trailer, the RV.
Yeah, the RV is almost as big as a lot.
I know, it's true. There wasn't any place they could go. All right, does anybody want to take a break, or, all right, want to move along? Okay.
I'm through.
We're cooking.
We're cooking. Next application is 250505, 2020 LLC owner, Harpswell Corner Market. This is map 5, Lot 127. The address is 509 Harpswell Neck Road. This is a site plan amendment. It's a consideration of an application to add picnic tables for outdoor seating. This is a fairly, sounds like a very simple situation. Unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be, there are some specifics about this particular lot and application that will require some discussion. You all have gotten the memorandum from Margaret dated May 15, 2025, and also Mr. Clark's short memo on all the projects. The major issue for this application really is parking, and so-
Before we get into that, Kim, you guys-
I was going to turn this over to you.
Well, do you want to determine that the application is complete before we talk about the standards?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, let's talk about completeness first, then.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's-
Well, I think you have to, we have to make a finding that the application is complete, that the submission was-
That's what I'm saying.
Except for those sections that-
I'm not sure it's complete. Okay, let's go through. Let's go through the submission requirements. Well, I was just going to see if Margaret wanted to just fill us in on any of the intricacies, but that's just fine.
I will once you guys determine it's complete.
Okay.
Then I probably-
I'm just wondering if we might get stuck there, but, okay. Let's go through, let's go through and determine whether the application submission is complete. And I'm going to suggest that we go through these one by one. Okay? So the first one, the first submission requirement is, let's see. All right, so in order to determine whether this application is complete or not, we have to waive certain submission requirements. And this is why this gets complicated for me, because I'm going to suggest that we quickly go through each one of these submission requirements that we're waiving. So I hope that you have your site plan review ordinance with you. The basic land use ordinance, right, that's what we're looking at, basic land use.
No, we're looking at the site-
Where am I on site plan? Okay, no, that's-
Section 14.
Wait a minute, I've got, okay, site plan review, right. Got it.
Yeah, on page 10.
14.1.3.5 on page 10.
It's actually 14.1, 3 through 5. Point 3.
3 through 5. Okay, so that's the record owner's name, the area in square, of square feet of the lot, the name and addresses of all property owners within 500 square feet, or linear feet, 500 feet, a sketch map, the boundaries of all contiguous properties, the tax map, a copy of the deed, a copy of all existing covenants, the name registration, and evidence of the applicant's technical financial capacity. 14.2 is existing conditions. 14.3 is proposed development activity. 14.4 is the approval block. 3 through 5, 3 through 5, 14.3 through 5. I think it's 3 through 5 because 14.3.7 is a calculation of the total area covered by all structures. Drive- driveways, parking areas. So, Margaret, are you suggesting that we don't waive that?
14.3 point 7.
Point 7.
I did say that we should waive it. I did include it in my waiver. Just because it's not going to change.
See, the comment that I would make about the submission requirements is twofold. First, this is not a site plan review from the beginning. This is not a new site plan review. This is one that's been amended in the past several times. And when we, the practice of the board in doing amendments has always been to only require submissions with respect to things that could change from the original conditions, like parking and like the, the standard with respect to how the traffic moves on the, on the lot, and maybe some others too, like the septic system and things like that. I don't know whether we, I mean, our practice hasn't been to require submissions on everything. However, that being said, I don't have the original site plan. There's no copy of it to know what we asked for way back when. Matter of fact, we don't even know when there was a site plan approval. But we do know that the owner, who owned it for many, many years, started the business after we had a site plan law ordinance. So theoretically, there should be a site plan. It should be recorded. The plan should be recorded in the registry of deeds. I did not find the plan in the registry of deeds. I don't know about the town's records.
I have it.
You have it.
In fact, I brought it with me. It's not, it's, the problem is, is that when it was originally, as you saw in my memo, I gave kind of a history of the, the site. When it was originally approved, it went through only the codes office, not the planning office. And so, the same, same steps weren't followed because it was allowed to be approved just through, instead of like a staff review committee like we have now, minor site plans or minor amendments or whatever the ordinance said at the time allowed the code officer to approve things.
Did he have to do it by certain standards?
I didn't bring the, I didn't bring that with me, Howard. I brought all kinds of other stuff.
Standards were a lot more real.
So, I have.
Margaret, what was it originally approved?
When was it originally approved?
Well, I put that in the memo. Hold on one second. Hold on, hold on, all right. In 2000, on the first page of the memo. Here, I'll just read it for the crowd. In 2007, code enforcement officer William Wells approved an application to replace a temporary awning with a 12 by 30 portico on the front of the store. At this time, the code enforcement officer had jurisdiction to review site plan amendments under the site plan review ordinance.
That's discussion of an amendment. When was the original site plan, I guess, is what I was asking.
That is the first that I saw notice of it. Because I think you're, I don't know, I can't speculate. I imagine it was probably home occupation.
He bought the property in, in 1985, from what I could tell. And so, at some point, he was operating.
I just would like to add, this is just my own history of comp conversing with Mr. Tetra. He originally, I think, built the structure that houses the store now to be his personal garage. I think that was the original intent.
That's what I heard.
And within months, he had the vegetable stand out. I think he probably always was hoping that he would have, instead of a garage, that he was hoping to have a store. And I think that lack of. I think because of that, the records that we have probably, are probably missing. So, the awning.
That was an amendment, though.
Yeah, that was an amendment. And, but, but do we have anything that shows the garage? Or shows the original building that was built in addition to the house?
What I, the first thing I have is the 17.
I guess where I was going with that whole discussion was, which I didn't get to the end of, because we started to do the questions, was it would be appropriate at some point to have an actual plan of what, where we are today.
What it looks like today.
That's dimensional. In other words, that is done correctly with appropriate dimensions that could show us, for example, how wide and long the parking spaces, whether they meet the, the terms of the ordinance. I mean, we're guessing a lot on this, on this.
I think that's absolutely right. And, and because, just because we amended something before doesn't, if we made a mistake on it, it, it doesn't mean that we go forward compounding the original error. And I don't think it's possible, given the information that we have, to really fulfill our duties and obligations that the ordinance requires us to fulfill. For example, ensuring that there is adequate room for parking and, and turnaround and backing in and backing out and deliveries, service deliveries and things like that. I just have questions about that. And based on the submission that we have, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question.
If I may interject, last month, we approved just such a site plan, parking drawn willy-nilly on a piece of paper, printed out from Google Earth. So, for us, and they were doing no site improvements, just as Joe was proposing no site improvements. So, I think that that's a precedent that, that we set, that we agreed, nobody made them measure, nobody mentioned measuring a site, the size of a parking spot last month. So, for us to require him to have a engineered site plan when he's proposing no site improvements, I don't know if that is, if that's adequate.
We, we can't require an engineered site plan, but we can require a dimensional site plan. The same thing happened with Morse's. He wrote down the dimensions of everything on his, on the, actually, it was the tax map thing.
Totally, except he was adding a business. So, I think that's different. He was proposing changes to the site. He was adding an extra business, and we wanted to make sure that, if I remember correctly, that he met all those standards.
No, he had to come for a site plan review.
Right.
Because.
He was, they were adding a business to the lot.
No, because he was adding seating.
That's right.
Well.
And the business was allowed under a different ordinance because it was a.
Right, but seating.
Mobile vendor.
Yeah.
So, the, the issue that we had to face, and we went through, by the way, we went through not just parking, but we went through the relationship to the parking that the seafood place had, and how much was going to be generated in this use. And we did it cumulatively.
We did.
Including the area that the fisherman, the daily fishermen that used the wharf parked. So, we were, I mean, we went through three meetings on that site plan just for adding seat, outdoor seating.
Well, no, not just for adding seating, for converting him from a temporary seasonal food truck.
No, he's still seating. He's still food truck. He still has to do his life.
But it's a different set of standards when you want, he's now moved from needing a select board permit every year to make, and able to leave his structure, have his business there forever because he went through the site plan review process. So, it really was us approving him adding an extra business to that lot, including a business with seating.
Last month, we had similar, no change, no development was going on. And we were provided at the meeting with an aerial map, and they laid out showing measurements of the parking stalls and stuff.
Yep.
Like I said, those are very accurate these days. And if you have a line, you know, it can be very easily done with minimal, just time and effort, really, and no cost involved. I think since we all know the site, you know, something like that would be, I think, sufficient, and we could put, and put that on the record.
That's right. I think, I agree. I think it's really important that just because we didn't do it one time doesn't mean we just go, that we, we tied our hands in further applications. One of the things Howard asked before was, if McDonald's came to town and wanted to develop on this corner, would we require site plans for McDonald's? Or would hand-drawn stuff be okay? I think we know the answer to that. So, we, we don't want to keep compounding errors or misinformation. So, if it's easy and it can be done accurately, then why not do it? And then you have a plan on file, and if something is changed or amended in the future, then you have that accurate record in the file, and you know exactly what you're changing.
And I don't think it, it's an undue burden, which I'm trying to be conscious of as well.
So, what are you, I'm not.
What am I?
I'm not exactly clear what you're asking.
Okay, basically, do a Google Maps, Google Earth, go down, do an aerial. They have measurements that you can get the exact dimensions of the existing parking lot. What's the dimensions of a parking stall? Measure it out. You can do it, print it off, measure it out. You know, you can even do it with annotations online or print it and do it manually. But something like that, you know, do reasonable care, measure it out. As long as we approve it, you know, that can be, I would feel, be used as a measurement of adequate or inadequate parking. What's there?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're talking about just.
The existing parking lot.
Making sure that the existing parking lot, the spaces that were, are required under the ordinance actually fit there.
Correct.
Okay.
That way, we have something mapped and in record.
Yep. And that is a discussion that we should have tonight, is about what we want to count as parking, how we want to calculate, so that he knows.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, we measured the parking spots.
Could you give your name, please?
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm Joe Shaver, I'm the owner. And I just wanted to say, we measured the parking spots to the, and I don't remember the measurements at this point, but Margaret, when you sit around that code for a parking spot with, we measured those. We didn't document them, but.
Okay.
Those are new spots that we painted last year.
It's just not on the plan, that's all. It's just.
Okay, so what I, what I see in what you've, what you've given us is you have a dimension 16 by 26 of the building, but you don't have any dimension of the parking area from the road or from the granite, the granite barriers that you've erected, which thank you very much for doing. And I think we need to see the distance between the house and the side of the store so that we know, you know, you've got a parking spot in there. But I can't tell from this whether it's possible to back out of that space safely or not. I know from my visual observation, it, it looks pretty iffy to me, but you, I can't tell at all from this map whether there's adequate parking or not.
Do what you did here.
It's not.
And do it here.
It's not dimension.
I think that's all we're asking. Have a nice, what's the dimensions? And then every 10 feet, you know, make sure it's equal. So, pretty much just take the store building, but do it on the parking area. That way, we've got the dimensions and it's laid out.
And I think if you, you know, if you, if you have questions, probably codes could help you make sure that you do something that would satisfy code. Or Margaret could help you do something that would satisfy the ordinance.
Just for example, the question that you asked, there is space from the last park, the closest parking space to the, to the building to get a car through, to get to that.
Yep.
Single parking space between the house and the, and the store.
Yeah, that used to be a drive-through.
But you can't see that.
No, you can't.
On the plan.
No.
And the same thing with the dumpster. If there's a car parked in the space in front of the dumpster, they're not going to be able to pick up the dumpster. So, you, you have to.
Exactly.
That goes to another one of the requirements, which is how you get around the site. And.
Try to keep it easy.
Sounds like it.
Everything comes off of a, a real site plan. Now, had there been an official site plan that was recorded that was on my lot and went to the registry, we would have originally had all that.
Exactly.
And, and it would have shown at least the dimensions of the parking space. But that may have been not the practice way back when in the 80s.
And looking at Tim's notes here too, do we go over those?
Yeah.
Or is that at this stage?
Well, I think if, if we're going to be asking him for more information, we need to tell him everything.
Absolutely. Exactly.
Did, did the, Margaret, did the site plan, this originally went to the site plan review committee?
It went to William Wells, William Wells.
No, I mean, no, I meant this.
And then the site plan staff review committee is what they call it.
You were at that, right?
Yeah, I was at that.
Yeah.
But recently, after they, they bought the place.
Oh, yes, in November or something.
Yeah. Okay, and my recollection in discussing that, because Mark brought that, there was some discussion here about it because we asked about it. And he said to us, as long as nothing changes in the business plan, they can do what they would, had always, had been doing in the past. So, that generates the issue for today. Now, they want to make a change. And what we want to try to figure out is what do we need to look at in order to approve that kind of change?
Exactly.
But it, at some point, you guys had to decide that that amendment didn't have to, I mean, had to go to the planning board as opposed to the staff site review committee. There must have been an internal discussion about that somewhere.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't speak of it, but it meets, it meets.
I mean now, for this meeting. Why did I come here?
I wasn't at the, I didn't, wasn't a part of the decision that, at the staff review committee where they voted to move it to the full planning.
Right, and we did it because of the question about the parking.
Parking, okay.
Yeah, because our, in looking at the nature of the business, you know, this is not turning it into a restaurant, which brings in all sorts of other stuff. So, the question was one of, can we, can we decide on our own as the staff review committee that the parking is adequate and that the picnic tables are going to be in a safe spot and all that? And thought that was well beyond what we should be doing as the site review committee. And so, that's why I came here.
So, at that site review committee, it was Matthew James, Dan, and Tim Clark.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the ordinance says, amendments to approved site plans for structures of less than 1,000 square feet shall be reviewed by staff review committee rather than the planning board if it determines that the proposed amendment affects compliance with the site plan review ordinance approval standards or alters the essential nature of the original site plan.
Yep.
Yeah.
And my understanding was that Mr. Ironman made it really clear that what was being approved in the original application was approved, but that there were, if there was any change to the business model, it had to go to the planning board. And so, this is a change to the business model.
That's just from the ordinance, that's, you know.
Didn't we determine that it was 1,818 feet, square feet?
What?
The building, the structure.
I think, no, I don't remember now.
Yeah. From the tax, from the assessor's office.
I think I included that.
So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have qualified for.
No, it's just the changes are less than 1,000 square feet, not the site itself.
No, that's not what it says.
The ordinance?
No, it says amendments to approved site plans for structures of less than 1,000 square feet.
Right, so if you're, if you're like adding a structure that's less than 1,000 square feet.
Well, that would be one way of reading it. But I'm not sure that's the right way.
That's how it's been read to me in the. That's how it's been read to me in the past.
All right, so...
But there were sufficient...
Let's figure out where we are.
Regardless, there were sufficient questions to bring it here.
Yeah, absolutely, right. All right, so I think we've established that we're sort of, we're not sure where to move on yet in terms of whether or not we're going to find that the submission requirements are complete because we think that there needs to be a more accurate drawing that shows the measurements as exactly as we can get them from a Google Map, that shows where all the parking spaces are, that shows where the dumpster is, that shows the distance between the building and where all the proposed parking spaces are, and ingress and egress. So I think we, are we all in agreement with that? I don't know that we have to take a vote on that, but I think we're all in agreement with that. What I think we should take a vote on is how we want to calculate parking spaces because Margaret has given us a really great summary with her memo under Parking Review Standards. It's the second page of her memo dated May fifteenth, 2025. And if you turn it over on the second page, she's calculated for us what some of these parking spaces might require. I want to just say that according to the ordinance, oh, where did I have that? According to the ordinance, it doesn't have to be either or. The parking can be calculated based on two different standards. And so, what page are the parking requirements are?
Well, it's fifteen point seven.
Yes.
Yeah, I know. I had notes and I'm trying to find my notes. All right.
So the, the things that relate to the site are fifteen point four, which is access, fifteen point five, which is egress, location and spacing, fifteen point six, which is internal vehicular circulation,
Yep.
fifteen point seven, which is parking, and fifteen...
Oh, I know, here it is.
...point eight, which is pedestrian circulation.
And what I wanted to just make note of here in fifteen point seven point one, it says the site must provide for sufficient off-street parking. Parking requirements shall be calculated using one or more of the following formulas in a cumulative fashion as appropriate. So just wanted to make note of that. It doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be one or more. Okay. So the, the space in the building, what do we say that the building space was? I'm looking at two, two different pieces of paper here. Eighteen hundred and eighteen square feet, so eighteen eighteen square feet. And that equals per 180 square feet of gross leasable floor area equals 10 spaces. So that's 10.
For retail use.
For retail and commercial sales.
Right.
Which is, which is one of the uses of the building. And then eating, drinking, and recreation, there, you want to have a counter in there where people can come in and stand and drink their coffee.
Yeah, just like a casual kind of coffee counter.
Yeah, a coffee counter. Can people stand there and, and drink their coffee? Or is that just a serving place?
It's just like sort of a table in the center where people can kind of congregate.
Okay, okay. So depending upon the number of picnic tables, you have, if you have six, one parking space per three seats. So if you have one picnic table that has six seats, that would be two parking spaces. So that would be 10 spaces plus two. And then you also need a space for an employee.
There are, it's not, I don't think it's on the drawing. It might be on the drawing that we did. But there are parking spots around back of the house. There's two spots there.
Okay, so that's a total of 13 spaces. I just want to make...
There's one spot on Mountain Road and one spot between them. There are more, more spaces somewhere?
The entrance on Mountain Road can have, we can have two cars there. I don't know, like, it's not like customer parking, but...
I don't think you...
I can park there and...
That wouldn't be, I don't know if that meets the standard if you stack. I don't know if you can stack and then back out onto Mountain Road.
Yeah, we don't back out on Mountain Road. We would just on the yard.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure before we move on that we, we give this applicant as...
So fourteen point two of the submission requirements goes through
But I want to make sure that we...
A listing
Yes.
Of all the things from a dimensional, that you would put on the plan.
Right. But Howard, I want to make sure that we are in agreement with the number of parking spaces.
I don't know if we can get there.
Okay.
A very long discussion about how you interpret the parking standards in the ordinance, the listings. In other words, there is reference to that you are, that it's cumulative. And we have used a cumulative test based on usage in the past.
Yep.
As a matter of fact, we've always done it that way, from what I can tell, at least during my tenure here. Which means that if you had a separate use, and for example, the Hegarty property last month, you have a restaurant, you have an office.
Yep.
You have a home, or rental home, and you had this space above. And you accumulated them. You took each use separately and figured out, well, how many spaces do I need for each use? But I think it gets much more complicated when, because you have to determine that in fact it is that use. The fact that you have seats and people may drink coffee, let's say outside. Talk about the inside first. It doesn't mean that the tables are going to ever be used that way. It's different than Morse's because you knew that they were going to sit down and have their meal. People may sit down just because they're tired. They may have a cup of coffee. They may have a soda that they bought in, in the, it's not an eating establishment, is what I would say.
Yeah.
It never gets to the level of an eating establishment. And the predominant use of the building is as a retail store. If it were a restaurant, it would not be licensed by the Department of Agriculture. It would be licensed by the Department of Health. And your license comes from the Department of Agriculture.
Correct.
As a retail establishment with food.
Yeah. And this is where I get, I think it's confusing because, because you sell baked goods and just like Itty Bitty does. And so people can, as they do with it at Itty Bitty, go in and get their coffee and their muffin and their donut and then go and sit outside and enjoy it.
But bakeries are licensed by the Department of Agriculture.
This is confusing.
Well, it's, it's the state of mind. But it's not different, the same dichotomy of agriculture versus health department runs everywhere. And, and what you really don't want to get classified is, is a restaurant because the inspection requirements, the health requirements are much greater, much more difficult. And there are, although there are only nine inspectors for the health department, and I don't know how many inspectors for the, when's the last time you saw your inspector?
Last year. I spoke with our new inspector this year. I haven't met him, but...
It's, it's very infrequent. So I guess what everybody, the way it works is, is it's sort of a, you try to figure out what the character of the business is. And if it's predominantly a retail business, then you get taken to the Department of Agriculture for your license. If it's primarily an eating establishment, a restaurant. You know, unfortunately, a lot of these places that we have here, the convenience stores, don't fall in a neat category because they make pizzas, they make hamburgs, they make, they bake goods, and they sell things, and they have picnic tables.
So where are we going and how are we going to give this applicant some guidance on this?
Well, I'm suggesting that for whatever reason, we have, how I would, how I analyzed it is, for whatever reason, we allowed, we have to be fair to everybody that does business in Harpswell and particularly businesses like this that people love. I'm serious.
I know.
Itty Bitty came in and it wasn't a, it wasn't a retail operation. It was the, the anchor. And they built a business out of, maybe because they had a reputation in Brunswick, and they're, they're doing very well. And it's something that was needed. And I, so I think we have to recognize that, that it, it probably hasn't impacted their parking ratio because they have picnic tables. And I think...
Well, I think it has.
Well, we don't know.
I...
The way you would determine that is, by the way, there's a way. I mean, the...
Well, you can ask the owner and she would, she would say yes, especially in the summertime. And that's, that's another challenge is the business is really different in the, but you, you folks aren't open in the wintertime, right?
Not right now, no.
No.
So it's a seasonal business and, well, but they don't have picnic tables in the winter, even though they may be there, no one's going to be using them.
But the other day I drove by them and there was people poke along the street.
That's right.
And everybody was inside.
And that's not good. Yeah, that's not good.
And that, that happens every single day, all day long.
Yep.
Because...
But the town of Harpswell, in its wisdom, allowed the Itty Bitty coffee shop to have 30 seats.
It doesn't have 30.
It doesn't, but they could have up to 30 seats with the parking they have because they deemed it a restaurant when it isn't. And, but that's what we did. And we have a sort of, I agree with you about compounding errors, but I, I wonder whether or not we have to be somewhat fair here.
Well, this is my concern and maybe there's a way that, I'm sorry that, you know, that you're, you're having to listen to us go through this, but we're, it really, we're trying to figure it out. What happens if, my, my concern is that what will happen here is what happened at the Itty Bitty because the Itty Bitty is a great business. I agree. Everybody loves it. But somebody could get killed crossing Route 123 because cars go 50 miles an hour there. It is a slowdown area, but cars are going 50 miles an hour. They're coming out of a 50 mile zone into a 45 and then into a 35 or 30. And folks are crossing the road and it's not a safe situation. And we didn't anticipate that, but if we had known, I think we would have looked at the application differently. So now we, now we know. And what happens if people start parking on, on both sides of the street the way they did for Veggie Corner and we've been given approval? Is there some way that we could say, we'll give approval for this many spaces, but if X and Y happen, then we have to come back and revisit it? And that's, that's kind of what I'm wondering.
I think the, I think there's a...
I don't know.
But part of the, part of the problem is that, you know, we have, we have in our mind how much parking we would love to see for all of these things.
We have to go by the ordinance.
Yeah, but the ordinance...
No, but the ordinance has a catchall too.
It has a catchall too, yeah.
And it says, it says it just has to be safe.
Yeah.
And we, we would make that determination.
Yeah.
But, but there's an answer to all of this with more information. The engineers, the traffic engineers have a guideline
Yep.
Called the ITE standards.
Yeah.
That has traffic, parking and parking requirements for every use you could ever imagine. And you get a traffic engineer to come out and...
That's probably what these are based on.
It may be, but these are very broad categories.
They're old. They're probably old.
And they're old and the ITE book gets booked. It's a huge book, gets updated every couple of years. And that's what in the real world, parking requirements are determined by. When you have a commercial site plan review, you have a traffic study. Now, those cost money. And, you know, I think that we as, we wouldn't want to have a situation like if they're parking on both sides of the road at Itty Bitty. We wouldn't want to have that situation at Veggie Corner because it's much more dangerous.
It's much more dangerous. And we also saw the other, the other issue, which I'm not sure we have enough information about is frequency of deliveries. Because I know that when the Veggie Corner had deliveries done, they blocked everybody in that parking lot. You couldn't get in or out. And so it'd be helpful to have information on deliveries as well, just to make sure that that's, okay. I mean, the end, the end result, as planners, we have to think about the long range repercussions of our actions is we just saw a four-way stop sign at the Naval Air Station and that's probably, you know, we're all kind of surprised about that. But if we ended up with a three-way stop sign at 123 and Mountain Road, it would end up probably causing difficulties for this business, for your business, but also for
Schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse because you couldn't get in or out if we had, in the summertime, it could, it could get really backed up there. So I think we do have to think about that. We have to go by the ordinance though. We, we have to go by what's in the ordinance. And so we need to determine the number of parking spaces that you need to provide. And I think we're still there. And I'd love to hear somebody, I mean, I've offered, I've offered my calculation, but I'd love to hear someone...
Well, before we can say how much is needed, we have to look at the site and say feasibly, what's already there?
Yeah.
Because if we say we need 14, but there's no way to squeeze out more than 10, then we're kind of done. So really it starts on what's there.
Yeah.
And that's an easy thing to measure out and take a look at.
But the applicant did say he's already measured it.
But unfortunately, this doesn't tell me. And on the one with the dumpsters, it's blocked by the building. So it's, to me, it's not a parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that...
Talk about that, but he did say that he did.
That drawing was kind of casual. We didn't really know the level of like...
And I said, do it more like you did the building, nice square with the measurements in there. That'd be a real big help.
So the, the ordinance has submission requirements. They're, they're not unclear. The issue is, would we want to waive them? The planner has given us a list of things to waive and they include the kind of things that were, that we really wanted.
Right.
So it, we have to make that decision.
We do.
As to whether or not we would want a more complete submission or waive them.
I am happy to entertain a motion.
But I think, I think Dean is correct. You can't say it doesn't meet the submission requirements unless we itemize what we want. I mean, clearly tell the applicant...
And that would include telling the applicant how many parking spaces he needs.
Yeah, it would. I agree with you. So...
And so, you know, so we know that it's a single use. So it's...
I think it's predominant retail use.
Yeah, so it is not like...
Question of that.
Yeah. So it isn't, well, we take the, we take the requirements for retail use and we add on those for another thing and that...
I think we could if we wanted to.
Which is where you get the cumulative.
Yeah.
But that's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with what Howard is talking about is the predominant retail use, so we use that.
But the secondary use is, we have no way of categorizing what it really will be.
No, we don't.
Because we have no idea who's going to use the picnic tables and for what purpose. We think that they might have a cup of coffee out there, but they also may just sit there. Someone, someone may be shopping and their wife is sitting there eating his lunch that they bought at Uncle Pete's.
Yeah.
How are we going to know? And, and it is not, it's not like a restaurant that serves people. You know what I mean? They're not bringing food out to the picnic tables.
Right.
They're not giving ice cream so that they sit at Pammy's seats. They're not giving ice cream so that they sit at Pammy's Seats. That's close, that's a-
My, my-
Something close.
I don't think anybody's going to go to Pete's and then stop off there.
Well, I just think it did-
Yeah, I get that. But, but I think, I think what, what could happen is somebody could go and say, and, and why not? I mean, go and get some baked goods and a cup of coffee, and maybe a sandwich, and some potato salad. I don't know what you're serving, what are you gonna be serving in there?
It's gonna, kind of change, you know, like based on what produce is available, potato salad's certainly an option, sandwiches we're making. We kind of work with the seasons, and, you know, my background is a chef, and like, I just kind of use what's available and try to make the best thing I can.
And so what, what happens, what would probably happen is people would go and get their, buy something in the retail store, and then come back out and sit outside and eat it. And-
We've already seen people doing that, they're sitting on the, on the planners, which is kind of, it's kind of funny, but, you know. And this is like, we're not trying to, like, change the business model.
Put the picnic tables on the porch, but that's a whole other issue.
We've got to have access and egress.
Yeah.
Who's, what, what happens in the house during the summer?
We're using it for office space and some storage. You know, we had thought about renting it, but it's not really a possibility during the summer, given the parking in the store. So, yeah.
But nobody's living there?
Nobody's living there, no.
Yeah, but this, this is what, this is where we, we need to really have an adequate, we need to have really good information, because if that store is an, or that the house is an invitation, it's, it's open, waiting to be used, and you've, you've maxed out, not you personally, but the site is already maxed out for impervious surface. So in a sense, you can't add any more parking spaces, because you can't add any more impervious surface. So if you use the house for, and you rent any of that house out, you're gonna have to have parking for the house. And so you've kind of maxed out the property, not you personally, but the use has maxed out the property. So unless the zoning ordinance changes, the property is what it is.
Say it, put it another way, if you were, you could rent it out as a house, but then you need two spaces to go with it, which would take away from the spaces that you already have, unless, because you can't build any more spaces because of the impervious ratio.
I think he mentioned in his application that the house is only being used as a house when the store is closed.
Right, but we would have to make that a condition of the-
Similar to last week, the last, or two weeks ago, where-
But the other-
They timed the parking use, you know, they shared parking spaces, but they're gonna time their meetings for when the restaurants close.
Right, but if it were being used as an office for the business, that's part of a site plan issue.
That is, exactly.
And, and so then-
Yeah.
You have to delineate that kind of thing on the site plan amendment that we're, that we're doing, much to the same way that you had to get approval for things like the, what was done in 2009, the awning and things like that, and when you came in, when somebody, when Ray came in and wanted to bump out the coolers, and build a structure for the coolers.
Okay.
All that site plan stuff.
Yeah.
Because it then becomes part of the commercial of the business, as opposed to a residence.
So in, in an effort to herd the cats here, this is really good discussion, and it's really important discussion. Do we want to waive any of these fourteen point one, two, three, or four? Do we want to waive any of those? Do we want to go through those in detail and then decide which ones we want to waive? Is that, is that where the board wants to go?
I think what we really want is the existing conditions and the proposed conditions.
So we want to table this?
Fourteen point two has the, would, would result in a, a plan. He's given us the narrative of what he, what he would like to do. But we're only talking about a minor change in what I want to do. And, but what we really need is to know what the dimensions are.
Yeah.
I think we have all that, we have the information about the other requirements, other than the, there may be an issue about the septic that people would like to talk about.
Yeah.
So I don't think it has to be extensive. I think it's something that we could probably get done between now and the next meeting.
Okay, so-
Are you saying you want him to get a, a formal, like, site plan?
No, I, no, if he took, as, as Laurie had suggested, a Google Earth drawing, or drew-
Or just grid paper, grid paper, measure it out?
Take this drawing and put it on a, on a, I mean, we've accepted this on, on graph paper.
Yeah.
Where the, we know exactly that the thirty, if it's one quarter inch is ten feet. You know exactly, you know, you know what the dimensions are. And, and you can measure the dimensions of the, of everything, and have the parking spaces show the dimensions, have the distances.
You might be able to even get an engineer, somebody from the codes or planning office could help you. Just get somebody just to take it and put it on a computer and do a computer drawing for you, that would not be really expensive, just to do that.
Yeah.
We just need to have accurate location of the buildings, accurate dimensions from the street, all the structures, accurate ingress and egress widths, and accurate parking. So it needs to be an accurate site plan that shows all the dimensions and distances.
I mean, we required that from Baker's Place on, on the road. I mean, we've got to be consistent.
So do we want a table?
The last meeting, that's not at all what we've required. It's, we gave, she provided Google Earth with hand drawing over Google Earth. So that's what we found to be sufficient for the last meeting.
Good.
We're, we're just trying to be helpful, Margaret, so that he can get his approvals, and-
Whether it's on graph paper, or it's, it's put on Google Earth that shows dimensions?
I know, I'm just, if Howard's talking about consistency, I mean, I think that speaks to the consistency that our standard, the standards two weeks ago were pretty different than-
Well, one of the things I-
Than getting, than hiring a surveyor.
We're sort of transitioning, you know, from this local planning board that has basically accepted drawings on the back of an envelope, to more sophisticated information, because our, our, our applications are getting more complicated. And so we, we need to make this transition, we're trying to make it smoothly and be fair to everybody, but we do need to do it. We've gotten caught on too many situations where we don't have accurate information, and then because the record in the office isn't accurate. And so we're trying to make sure that whatever we have on record in the office is as accurate as it can be, so that as we move forward, we move forward with good info. And that's really, it's, that's what we're trying to do. So do we want to table this application?
Well, I don't think we're done yet.
Okay.
Because, no, I think we have to talk about parking.
Okay.
Yeah, because, because I, I think-
What it is, what is it? You know, retail or is it restaurant? We have, don't we have to make that determination? Because the parking is different, based on what you said.
Well, we're not gonna take a vote on it, but we have to certainly get a consensus of how we're gonna look at this.
That's right, and, and I think what Margaret was getting at is, we don't have to send them out for engineering.
No.
No, I agree with that.
No.
And just to, to use the same standards that we used for the last one for laying out the parking.
That's fine.
The only thing I will say is that the Baker's Place went, we were back and forth on that, I don't know how many times, until they got an engineer that gave us the kind of plans that we could look at and understand.
That's exactly right.
As opposed to these ideas that we, we kept receiving.
And that was extremely helpful to him.
And that was a very murky one. This one, I think, is actually pretty clear-cut. I don't think it needs to be on a computer. I've done graph layouts very accurately, on a piece of grid paper with a tape measure. And as long as you've got the grid and you know what your measurements are, it can be as accurate or better than a computer.
Go for it.
No.
Absolutely.
Just take the time to actually just do it.
Get an engineer plan, but I mean, you don't have to.
Okay, so do we want to have a discussion about parking?
Yeah, what's the consensus? My suggestion had been that this use is, number one, not predominant. The use of the, the likelihood that there will be people eating at the tables is strong, but it is not really a, a use that would require additional parking necessarily. But, but you then raised the concern, well, if they start parking on the street, we gotta have a way to solve that parking. Well, we can sort of do that by making a, a condition. If we determine that we, there's no additional parking here, there is a benefit to the public and to his customers, and maybe to the town, to have a gathering place, an additional gathering place. It's, it's the essence of community. So, but if it becomes a traffic problem, we have to find a way to solve that.
But what's the kickoff? How do we know? We, there has to be a-
Well, we're not gonna know, but we, but by the end of this summer, if he start, if he has his picnic tables, and he's willing to take the risk that he can't use them at the end of, for next year, we would have a trigger, that if there are problems with people not having enough, if there's not enough parking spaces because we've added picnic tables, then-
Would that pass legal muster?
I don't see why not. We are allowed to put conditions in.
But who's gonna measure it?
We can re-
Yeah, who's gonna measure it? And how, how, how is the trigger gonna be, how are we gonna know what the trigger is?
Well, you're, you're not gonna know that unless you require a traffic study, and we're not gonna get there.
Howard, I love this idea of giving a one-year conditional approval, and then going, seeing how this year goes, and then revisiting it for next year. And we could talk about it either way. It was a success, it was a failure, people parked on the street, it was dangerous, it was safe.
I guarantee you, we'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing I remember from our discussion before is that you were looking at, let's see what happens this year, and we'll decide what the business is gonna look like going forward, based on what you see this year, too.
Yeah, I think we're pretty locked in with what we're doing. I mean, I can't imagine changing the business at this point.
Is there the option of leasing space from the-
The Grange?
The Grange. I don't know if they've ever been asked that, but-
That thought crossed my mind, I don't remember if we were talking about it, Margaret, but I think the, the walk would be somewhat dangerous.
It's really dangerous.
Well, but it's on the same side of the street, and it, it would be much safer than parking across the street. I mean-
Because there's really no walk area.
There is no, there is no-
Well, there's no bicycle area either, so that's not even getting to that discussion. Because everybody bicycles around here, and, you know what I mean?
I'm just trying to think of some ways to-
Options, yeah.
Yeah, to, to help out, as a possible-
I really like that idea of the one year. The, the one-year conditional.
That's something that you could, with, if we ultimately went that way.
Yeah, I think so. I mean-
See how it works out?
Yeah, I, I don't really anticipate the flow to change, just because people are kind of hanging out in the store already, and we're just trying to build a place for them to-
Yeah.
Have, set their coffee cup down and not block the coffee machine, for example, or to eat their sandwich on a bench instead of in a parking lot.
But you understand that, you understand that the, the way they set these things, these trap, the parking standards originally for retail, by doing it based on square footage, we, we want people to come in and out quickly, so that other people can come in and out. And if you have people that aren't coming in and out, they're staying, because, because we've not provided them-
Exactly.
The comfort of, of that, then it gets, then the parking doesn't work. And we don't know what the answer to that is, unless we told you to get a parking study that justifies it. I mean, that's what traffic engineers do.
Yeah.
They, they, they come in and they give us testimony that says, we think that it's not gonna generate any more parking.
Well, that's, that's my, that's my rationale for arguing for the cumulative count, and for thirteen spaces. That's, that's my rationale.
But that, but essentially, you're saying no then, because there is no-
I don't know what's available. I, I sense that, that, that may be the case, but I don't know. I mean, there's-
The prior site plan amendments that said it.
There's twelve parking spaces here, one, two, three, four, five, it's twelve. And then in, in the back is thirteen and fourteen.
No, no.
Except, there's a septic thing, you can't drive on a septic system.
They took two of the spaces that were shown on that plan for the landscape burns that we required the last time.
So-
There's only ten?
There's only ten spaces.
There's only ten.
Well, I think that, I think that eleventh space is where the dumpster is.
Number three, I think that's where we are. If you read number three, for the principal use, the seating will be for eating, the to-go food purchased at the market. It could be argued that the proposed use does not qualify as an eating and drinking establishment, I agree with that. Using this formula, ten spaces are required. You already have ten spaces, you have more than ten spaces. So that's-
Plus, plus one for an employee, right?
Yeah, yeah. If you have eleven or twelve.
There's no requirement for employee space on, on retail.
For, not for retail and commercial.
Oh, okay, okay.
Only for eating and drinking, for whatever reason that is, because they need employees.
For whatever reason.
Doesn't include it.
Okay, all right.
Or, or owner. I mean, you guys don't live there, you have to get there from somewhere. So where do you park?
In between the buildings.
In the, oh, so that's your space.
Yeah, and then there's an employee who parks in front of me, just because I'm out there the whole day.
So I don't want to put you out of business, but I don't think you have adequate parking. And I, I feel that, I'm happy to see what happens, but I'm worried about they're not being-
Because you are attributing parking spaces to the picnic tables?
Yes, I am. I think the pic, I think the picnic tables-
Can we get a consensus of that? Because if the board doesn't agree with that.
Well, the board can, the board's gonna vote, I, I can be a minority vote, and that's fine. I, I don't have any problem with that.
Because that's essentially saying no.
Well, I, I know, but I'm not saying no, the site is saying no. The site is what the site is.
I agree.
You know? So I don't want to take anybody to blame me for this, it's not personal, it's not, it's, I'm not biased about this. I just want there to be safety, I want to do my job, and-
Absolutely.
That's, that's all I'm interested in.
Reasonable people can differ, this is a close call.
Yeah, it's really a close call. It is.
But I think the, the, there's no way we can, no amount of conjecture is gonna answer the question about what this is really gonna look like. And I think that's what we were-
That's why we, if we tried it for a period of time, and it didn't work, and we have a way out of it, as opposed to a site plan approval that goes on forever.
That is the only reason I would vote for that, because I-
Or as opposed to, or as opposed to saying, we're not even gonna give you a chance.
Well, right, but I have, I do drive by the Itty Bitty three or four times a week, and Laura is absolutely correct, they're lined up on both sides of the road. I have seen this business in operation, and it has been really crowded.
Yeah.
And in the summertime, in the wintertime, not so much. But in the summertime, it's a dangerous situation, and it's a dangerous intersection. And if, you know, if we end up with a three-way stop sign, that is going to really impact that entire area.
That would be-
That would be a mess.
Why do we even, why do we even have those in Brunswick? I don't understand why they have those in Brunswick.
No, no, we'll put it in a roundabout.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, and you can, you can do the eminent domain.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You've been in court for a hundred years on that one.
I want you to bring that to town meeting.
Yeah.
All that-
Yeah, you know, we don't have anything to argue about at the town right now, so why don't we do that?
Okay, all right. Where, where are we going? Where are we going, people?
Well, I-
Are we, are we, do we want to take a vote on the ten spaces?
I question if there's ten spaces.
I think we need to reach a consensus on that. If, if everybody feels that we need more than ten spaces, then it isn't gonna, then there's no reason to discuss this, we just deny it.
Does somebody want to make a motion on the parking issue?
I guess we need to know how late this is. What did they say with space size?
We haven't met the submission requirements.
Okay, so let's, okay.
So we can't really decide that question, but we can certainly reach a consensus among us.
Okay, all right. So no vote, just a consensus, and then you have to rely on our good faith not to change our minds between now and the next meeting.
There may be things in the papers, in the-
Yeah.
All right, so do we-
So what was, what was your thought, Howard?
My thought was, first of all, if there is a cha, if there is a way to determine to get more parking on this site somehow.
No.
We, and we absolutely don't, don't allow gravel parking? This, this is-
It's at its maximum lock coverage, that's what makes this site so restrictive. There is space on the site for more parking, but they can't develop any more of the site, because you can only cover 20%. So, they've dealt with this issue.
We don't allow parking on grass.
It counts as impervious.
What does, gravel does?
Anywhere that you drive, regardless of if it's grass or gravel or pavement, that counts against you.
If we had the exact dimensions, though, we, so it's not gonna, 10's it?
12. Well, I mean, I think there's 12. There's 10 in the parking spot, 10 in the parking lot, one by the house, and one out back.
Okay.
He said there was 14, I think.
Out back meaning on, on Mountain Road.
Yeah. Joe's original site plan said there was 14, but we, Howard went out and counted them and thought there was only-
No, there's 10.
10, not 12, in the top parking lot.
Right, marked spaces, we have 10, and then there's like that 11th spot where the dumpster is, that's, we're not counting that.
You can't count that one.
Right, and then there's the one by the house and out back.
And then there's, I mean, we- I don't know if it works for parking space count, but we have two cars that we can put in between the house and the store, and then-
Can, but then it, then it would defeat the impervious, because it's only one.
So, what happened, a little backstory, is there, you, you used to drive in Mount, in 123 and out Mountain Road.
Yep.
And the reason they took that out is because they were at their maximum lock coverage, and they wanted in addition. So, they removed that, and so that's not an option.
So, what happens when the-
Although it is logical.
What happens when the trucks come?
I mean, they, they usually come early enough, and there's, the parking lot's not crowded.
There isn't a big Cisco truck that comes?
No, you, oh, we don't use Cisco, we don't, I think some of the beverage trucks might have bigger trucks, but, um, you know, when the deliveries come, there's usually nobody in the parking lot.
Okay. My feeling is that the, I, I, for whatever reason, and I know that you can, if, if you have a designated space inside the building for service, I have more, in my own mind, more difficulty with that than I have with the picnic tables. Because the picnic table, there's no other use in the building than to sit there and have coffee and pastry or whatever. If it's outside the building, and the building stays completely retail, that's the predominant use. And, and since nobody can tell us, other than a potential traffic engineer, how many people actually sit at picnic tables, and how long, and whether it generates more parking requirements, I would say it's a, you know, it's like an auxiliary use, or it's not a significant use enough to generate a parking requirement, to have a couple of picnic tables. And the 10 ought to do it, but, but because we're not sure, I would have the condition that it be temporary for a year, and we review the parking situation again a year after, you know, like, you know, November of 2020.
Okay, but that's not a motion that, I mean, okay, I understand that, okay.
I'm not making a motion, I'm asking for, I'm saying how I would look at this.
But we're still not, so are you happy with 10 parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's what the ordinance says.
Lori, how do you feel about 10 parking spaces?
If they have 10.
They have 10, how do you feel about 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel, yeah.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement that 10 parking spaces is adequate. Okay, for the business.
That we aren't going to add on additional parking requirements.
Is that an unlimited number of picnic tables, or is that two picnic tables, or one?
I thought he was talking about, he was talking about two to three, six picnic tables. I would probably keep it at two, but-
He's saying two to three.
But we did give itty-bitty three. Wait, when I say we, the site plan review committee-
That's a lot.
Decided it was a restaurant.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
And that was-
That was a lot, that was a lot.
Yeah, well, maybe we didn't have good information, I, I don't know, I was part of that, and, um-
But that's how I would do it.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Wow, okay.
That sounds, that sounds good to me as well. But we've gotta get the measurement out, yeah.
I think just get the measurement, we're all saying 10 is what's needed.
Yeah.
We just have a mag, because we need it for the records anyway.
Yeah.
That way it can be filed, and we have it in the, in our records going forward. So, just something, again, just measure it out accurately, that we can have. If then it shows there's 10 adequate, that makes it easier. I like the idea of a one-year conditional, because that gives us some wiggle room, because you don't even know, if it's all guessing. You want it to do well, but it's a guesswork. So, let's kinda get a feel for what happens this summer, and revisit it.
I'm gonna ask Howard to really do some research on what the trigger is, because we need to be very, very clear on how that will be triggered, what the trigger will be, and exactly what the-
And we have done temporary things, remember when we gave-
We did over here.
We did maker guy, we, we gave him the right to have a, have a temporary hint for, for a season.
Yeah, we did.
We gave him like a season-long license.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah, we did, yeah.
So, I think we can do it, and without triggering, you know, getting Amy in a-
I just don't want, what I don't want to-
Not you, Amy, Amy Chow.
Okay, what I, what I don't want to see happen regardless, is that we give approval, and that the business does well based on a parking situation, that we come back a year later and say, that's untenable, you can't do that anymore. And then, then what does the business do? Then what does the, takes the picnic tables away?
Well, otherwise, you would just say no, now, and he never has a shot at it.
Then the pic, then he has to take the picnic tables away, and that's it.
Well, we'll give him, put him on itty-bitty. Really, no, I'm ser, being serious, we have to have a way to do this. The other alternative is to get a traffic study. And if he come in, came in with a traffic study that says this, this is not going to be a problem, we would give him a, we would let it go. We would approve it.
Yeah.
You could-
So, he has a choice.
You could approve it for a season with the expectation that he'll get a traffic study, and then before he can reopen for 2026, he could come back with his traffic study.
I wouldn't even require it, unless there's a problem.
Oh, all right, so we give it-
If there's a problem, then we'll, then he's gonna-
What's, what's, what is the scope of the traffic study? But we're, I, I'm not gonna suggest we have that discussion now, but it's something to think about. Traffic studies could include the intersection of Mountain Road, we have to be more clear about what we want included in the scope of the study.
I thought we were talking about parking. That's what traffic engineers do.
Ingress, egress, okay, all right. All right, frankly, I am getting fuzzy, and want to know from the board where you want to go with this. Do we want to go through these, itemize these things that we want, that we're being asked to waive, the submission requirements? Or do we wanna wait, table this, ask for the information to come back?
I think we should.
And then, okay.
Are we asking, Margaret can work with them, and come back with a sketch plan, that-
An existing conditions plan.
Yes.
Because the only thing changing between existing conditions and proposed conditions is the placement of the picnic tables.
Yeah.
And let's, let's in doing that, show where the ta, where the, where proposed two picnic tables would go, so that they don't obstruct the view as recommended by the safety plan.
What did the fire guy say? What did, how?
He just didn't want the picnic tables too close to the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not art anymore.
It's, it's Mike Drake.
Yeah, Mike, yeah.
Mike, yeah, I just, I would be concerned if somebody, because there's no barrier at the end of the parking spaces.
He's suggesting putting it under the tree that's in the front yard.
Yeah, the barriers have really helped.
Went forward, they're gonna wipe out-
A natural wall or-
Yeah, yeah.
The tree.
They have been, because people were parking right in the right-of-way, and you literally, coming up Mountain Road, if you were gonna go left, you could not see what you were doing. And people would come barreling through that intersection, that is not the situation anymore.
Okay, so, so if, if we get the, if we get the parking thing on the map, is that sufficient to meet all of the application requirements?
I think depending on-
I thought we wanted the dimensions and the distances and-
Yeah, that's what he-
Yeah.
Depending on-
Not just the parking spaces, but the building itself, and the-
Yes.
Distance from the house, and the house dimensions, and all that comes.
Could we get lock coverage, too? Could we calculate lock coverage, so we really know what we're talking about in terms of maximum lock coverage? Do we have that somewhere?
We do, but you're welcome to require it if you'd like to.
I, I think we should require it, just so we have it, just so we have it on the record. Okay, because there may be room for another parking space. I don't, I don't know how the impervious surface was calculated, I, well, I don't think it was in our submission requirements, you said-
No, because-
You said it, but-
Because it was included in a previous application, and there was no change proposed.
So, maybe we could just get the information from that previous application and put it in.
I wanna say it's probably, well, yeah, I'll make sure you guys have it.
Okay.
I wanna say it's maybe-
Just in that's already on record.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's already on record, we're incorporating it.
Put it in the application, so we got it.
Okay, so, that's all we need, is the distance between the, the dimensions of the building, the distance between, and the size of the parking spaces, right?
And where the picnic tables are.
And where the picnic tables are.
Yeah.
Is that, and then anticipating moving at the next meeting to get the one-year conditional, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, and be very clear about what that is. Okay.
Is that?
So, I think, I think we're there.
Have we confused early?
It's a process. Yeah, I can see it working through.
It's better than when it, we first started, it's pared down a little bit now.
Yeah, okay. But let's hope this all works out, though.
I will move that we table this application until our next meeting, and that we, for our next meeting, we require essentially a site plan that has, that conforms to the standards that we discussed. And that we will determine then whether the application is complete, and move forward to, to approve or approve with conditions, or deny the application.
Yep.
That works.
Do you have any questions on-
Tabled until next-
To reiterate what we're looking for, just so you are clear.
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna do a grid paper, drawing of the site with all the measurements between the buildings, size of the parking lot, size of the parking spaces. Is that it? Did I miss something? Where the picnic table is, yeah, I have that.
But just kinda put them on this, we have an idea of where the picnic table is.
I made a motion, it hasn't been seconded.
I second your motion.
I'll second your motion. All right, any discussion? Lori's having a discussion? All right?
All right, all in favor of her motion?
All in favor, yeah, okay.
I can raise.
Thank you.
And I would really recommend working with staff, because they can really help you out. If you, I know you've already worked with Margaret, but really, that's what they're there for.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We wanna see this work.
We do, we do.
Yeah.
Believe it or not. Sometimes it doesn't feel that way.
We have, we just have, we get paid so much to do this job, that we really feel that we need to do it perfectly.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. Consideration of minutes from the May 7th meeting?
Courtney proposed a couple small changes, no substance, substantive changes, but just some punctuation.
Okay.
Some commas.
Okay, I move we accept the minutes of May 7th with the de minimis changes by our board member Courtney.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, um, oh, gosh, a legend of officers.
Already, seems like we just did this.
Wow, I didn't even see that on there, okay, all right, there we go.
We did this before, didn't we?
We do it every year.
Yeah.
Did we do it a year ago?
Yeah.
No.
Do we have to do it? Well, that's not true, bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
See you later.
We do, we did it probably more recently because Al resigned, well, we did it last, probably when Al resigned.
That's right, when Al left, we needed a new chair, and so that's when you became chair.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's the secretary?
So, before we, oh, sorry.
Dan.
I was.
I just wanna make one request, before you guys work on this project. The secretary right now doesn't have any requirements. I would like for the secretary to give a summary of the site walks at the meeting. Because we don't take minutes at the site walk, that there can be part of the record, who was at the site walks, did anybody attend, any questions that came up, or commentary. But I just thought, then the secretary can have a job, and it will be making sure something's in the official record.
That's a good suggestion.
So, I would like the secretary to be somebody who usually goes to the site walks.
That's a great suggestion, to have that down.
They really should be in our minutes, it should be part, it should be something we talk about at the meeting.
I was looking at you to do that.
I, I don't, but, because you go to all the site walks.
There is no requirement that the secretary be a member of the- Yeah, it is.
Yeah, you have to be a full member, I think, right?
I don't know about full, but they have to be a member, but they don't have any jobs.
Would we need to change the bylaws in order to do that?
I have to look at them.
Well, either that, or we can just-
I mean, we can do it.
That's a, that's a lot of discussion.
Make an administrative decision.
It just to-
Okay.
It's, it's not like we're talking-
I think it's a good suggestion.
It doesn't have to be formal, just something.
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion.
Or whoever is at the site walk, there's always somebody.
I was gonna say like the last one.
When we get at the meeting, just orally tell us what they saw.
Yeah.
The secretary or designate.
Yeah, there you go. That's a good idea.
All right. So, you have, you should ask for nominations for the chair.
Oh, okay, I ask for nominations for the chair.
I nominate Amy.
I nominate Dan as co-chair, as vice chair.
Yeah, I agree.
So, have a slate.
Yeah.
And Lori as secretary, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think that's what I am right now.
Yes, okay.
I think that's-
So, who, who nominated?
Dan nominated Amy.
Dan nominated Amy, I nominated Dan.
And me.
And Lori.
And Lori.
I just wanna say, I am happy to accept the nomination. I wanna make it really clear, though, what I said at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't realize we were gonna do this, is, is really the way that I feel it needs to be, which is that all of us bring specific contributions. Howard's legal expertise, I would love for Howard to be the chair and Dan to be a vice chair, because then we'd have two lawyers. But I think in a way, you folks are, you are free to do what you do best, if you don't have to worry about managing the meeting at the same time. And so-
So-
But I, I think that it, that we all bring specific strengths to the table. So, I see the role as the chair as the one that just organizes the meeting, keeps things going, helps to do the things the chair is supposed to do in terms of signing off on documents and that kind of thing. But everybody brings something to the table.
Yeah, it's not that the title comes with an additional stipend or-
No, right.
Well, so, let's take here the first one.
Okay.
Can we?
Okay, well, you know-
Somebody second those nominations?
Oh, I second those nominations for the A-
So, tho, so those nominations have been seconded, now I move that nominations be closed. Will I second that one, too?
Yeah, I'll second the nominations be closed.
All in favor of all of this?
I say yes.
You can vote, too. I can vote, too.
Yeah.
Six, zero. You can vote too, I can vote too, yeah, 6-0.
So, apropos, I just wanted to let you know that my life is changing a little. And my wife and I are building a house in South Carolina.
Oh, my goodness.
Gotta smell it.
And I will not be around in the winter, next, this next winter to come, so I will probably not be able to qualify anymore.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you guys know.
Well, it's a good thing we didn't nominate you as the chair.
I wouldn't have accepted your nomination, but I, you know, I feel, I have, you know, a lot of hesitancy in this whole thing, but, uh-
Well, this is a take last for you, but I'm really sorry to hear that.
Kids and grandkids are in the Carolinas and I-
That makes a difference.
Really, they've now 16, two twins and 16, and I feel like I'm missing everything. Alright, are we ready to adjourn, then we can-
Okay, um, any announcements?
Oh.
Maybe I had something, no, just the secretary job.
Do we have a sidewalk coming?
Oh, yeah, we have.
It's the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I thought, you know, for-
Uh, as a preview to next month, Lobster Lane is coming back, um-
Really?
They, yeah, they, they, one of the properties was sold in that neighborhood, and so three different properties all kind of took little pieces of it. So, they rearranged all the property boundaries, so Lobster Lane's got more land, so they're moving some stuff around.
So, it's an amendment?
Mm-hmm, it's an amendment.
Site plan amendment.
But it's so complicated. And there's another site plan coming through that's not quite complete yet, so we'll see if it gets complete before the meeting.
Two of two that we need to discuss, okay.
So, the sidewalk, okay, sidewalk then on the 9th?
If that's the, I wasn't prepared, I'm sorry, Dan.
That's the Monday before the week of the planning board.
Yes, the 9th at 2:00 or 3:00?
God, we're in June?
Yeah.
Gee, Chris Campbell.
Yeah, well, doesn't feel like it.
Alright.
At 2:00 PM, 2:00 PM or 3:00 PM do you guys usually do it?
Well, we don't have to worry about it getting darkened.
I was gonna say, 2:00 is awfully hard to avoid, because it really cuts into the afternoon.
Alright, let's do 3:00 PM for the secretary.
If we can, yes.
Well, we'll do, we'll do 3:00.
Alright.
3:00?
We don't have to go back to Joe's, so there's one less stop we need to make.